October 26th, meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call.
John Myers.
Here.
Josh Turner.
Here.
Pete Ketchum.
Here.
Jim Eisen.
Here.
Josh McCarty.
Here.
Rob Henderson.
Here.
Jonathan Myers.
Do the dedication.
Sure. We'll all take a moment to pray. Dear God and you Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to meet tonight as a council. And we're grateful for the opportunity to take care of the county's financial matters and we pray for light influence and to listen and to consider our all proposals with fairness and in particular this night, we pray that we make the best decisions for the 2021 budget. So we pray that that will watch over our first responders and our military to pray for these things in Jesus' name.
Please stand for the flag. The flag is certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
All right, approval of October 26th, 2020 agenda, there's going to be some changes. We're on a table G2, road maintenance interlocal until November 9th. Under A, we're going to add six. Commissioner update on the Justice Center. And seven will be moved from other business animal shelter of the current condition to be set.
A motion for approval of tonight's agenda as amended?
Second.
No motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Mr. McCarty, any other discussion? During the hall of papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close, passes. Other comments? During then, Commissioner West.
Good evening, my name is Wes Harrison. I'm the owner, so I presented for the Johnson County Justice Center expansion. And here to just give you an update, we are on schedule and within our budget. Not coming for any more money tonight. So the project is moving along quite nicely. The new salad port is, the exterior is completed. They're finishing up some interior areas in the new part. And then the renovation part gets started, the first part of February, which will be part of our new book-in area. The administration and visitor area renovation is complete and gets turned over to the owner this week. As I recorded last time, the medical area is complete and being occupied by the user group. The pods for the new jail area get delivered this next Monday, week from today. And they start installation right off the truck. They're just going to back the trucks in, lift them off the trucks and set them in place. So what I was thinking was that is about a two-week process. And maybe the week before Thanksgiving, we wanted to plan a visit for you guys to come and visit. It'd be interesting to see a lot of what's in place there. Kind of show you not only that area, but the new salad port area as well, the medical area too, if you're interested. So we'll keep that on the calendar. I'll check in before then and we'll track it in our calendar. So, but so far, all is good. We, like I say, we're on schedule and within our budget and really don't see any issues coming up. I think we've discovered majority of all the unforeseen's and they're doing quite well. So any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for all those questions.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, Animal Shelter.
Michael Zell, Director of Johnson County Animal Shelter. Some years ago, lovely young lady lost her life. One of the things that just shone about her was her love for animals. And to honor her memory of the year, eagles and other groups involved would host a charity ride. Plan a host of charity rides to benefit the Johnson County Animal Shelter and goes into a fund called Sarah's. This young lady's name is Sarah Woods. This is her mother, Cindy Woods. And I wanted to publicly recognize what they've done and have their leader introduce them if you don't mind. I will tell you this, I'm involved this year with Buster MSSC, the Shelbyville Eagle Riders Area 766. Wits End also, just want to like to recognize all those groups for their support for the 11th Annual Sarah's Ride. Going to the Dogs Charity Ride to Benefit Sarah's Fund. Total raised this year, $14,415. Total raised for the past 11 years, we sit at $91,056.74. And that's pretty amazing. So I'd like to introduce Tom Bland. I'd like to introduce Tom Bland who organizes this crazy thing every year. And I'd like to also introduce some individuals who are here tonight. Tom?
Thank you, sir. I'd just really like to thank you on behalf of everybody that participates in this business community. They're awesome, they're loyal. We are very proud, very, very proud to have one of the best animal shelters in the country, right here in Johnson County. That says a lot. And if we can be just a little part of helping that be number one, that's what we want to do. And if it's just getting together and organizing something to help raise some funds, riding our motorcycles and having fun, doing what we enjoy, we're honored to be here and I appreciate it. I'd like to introduce a few people. This is Buster Jeffers. He is the president of the local motorcycle group, the MSSC, the Madison Street Social Club here in Franklin. And for two years in a row now, they have helped my Eagle Riders team up together to pull this off. This year was a real struggle and you guys all know why. But we pulled it off and we would like to continue to pull it off. Every year, we would like to organize and do this. It's very important to our community that we do do this. This fund has done tremendous things at that animal shelter. We've not put an animal down in Johnson County since we started doing this ride. We have one of the best adoption raids for our animals out of Johnson County because of the vaccinations and things, spay neutering. And if our fund can help that, we want to do this. We enjoy doing this and like I said, we're honored to be here. Yeah, this is Buster Jeffers. These are his guys from the MSSC that I ride with. And Buster, you want to speak?
I would just say, the animal shelter is neat enough all by itself. But then Michael enlightened us that we also have helped out with some raptors, eagle, hawk, owl.
All kinds of animals, lizards.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not just about dogs and cats. It's a little bit about everything. And we just like the opportunity to get back to our community. We have a block party over here every year for neighbors. City gives us a permit, we shut it straight down, have a great time. And hopefully next year without this COVID thing, it'll be a whole lot better than it was this year. But thank you.
And again, guys, we'll see you next year. We'll see if we can't do a little better next year. Crazy world we're living in out there now, but we're not going to give up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark, you mentioned Wits End?
No.
We start and finish at Wits End. They kick up, give us a great breakfast, donate all the money to the cause. Good people to work with.
Thank you for everybody's participation. That's great. Great amount of money that's been raised for that.
And we couldn't do it without great businessmen backing us in our community here. It's all good. So thank you again, guys.
Absolutely.
See you next year.
Great.
Thanks for moving this up.
Yeah, we're all, thank you.
All right, that's the adoption of the 2021 county budget. Notes for the final adoption of the 2021 county budget. The general fund, number 10011420000122. High-end social security increased to $1,612,000. Account number 1001430000122. Perf increased $1,919,000. Council preparation reduced to zero. Stipends added $282,000. Should be noted, must be employed full-time as a February 25th, 2021 will be paid on September 9th, 2021.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pause on that and make sure that, I guess clarification and also to see if my logic or rationale applies here. I understand the two stipulations, must be employed full-time and be paid on. No problem with that. But I would think it's equally important that a recipient of that stipend have been a full-time employee throughout all of 2020. Part of our, I believe, part of our logic is to make sure that if you were here in 2020, we're trying to compensate you, you know, for bridging a gap. And if we couldn't bridge a gap, then this is what you can get. So to me, it doesn't make logical sense that if you didn't start with the county until January of 2021, early February, that you're still going to get the stipend that a multi-year county employee would receive for the same level of stipend. So I, rather than go through and say you have to be here two years, five years, whatever it might be, I think you need to be at least a full-time employee throughout calendar year 2019. I'm sorry, calendar year 2020, or in addition to these two other stipulations. So kind of want to throw that out there and see what others think about that.
Or at least maybe full-time. Calendar third, full-time by December 30th, 2020. Is what, I mean, does it start this fall or this summer?
To me, that individual is not... I don't know. I'm open to conversation, but I think it's more about for those who have made the time, they've been here and they were here the entirety of that year. But I'm open for other options.
Well, I agree with you because you said some of them in January. This is where people that's been here previously. So you're saying the full 2020?
That's a starting point for a conversation.
And if they leave before this day, that they, no difference.
I don't think they, if these two stipulations are approved or noted here. And I recall those conversations during the hearings. We were all pretty much in agreement that they should be employed for at least six months of this year. So, you know, money doesn't get paid out, then they go find jobs elsewhere or pursue other outside opportunities. So I follow that. I just am a little concerned about people who were not full-time employees in the year that were really trying to make a correction.
I agree with you. Makes more sense.
And I have no idea how many employees that would impact, no clue. How many full-time employees were not here January 1, 2020. Right, so earlier this year, that would then need to also be here as an FTE as of 2/25/21 and then be also on the payroll on 9/9/21 to be, to receive that stipend.
To me, I mean, I'm okay, I think you'd be okay to go back in some regard in 2020. For me, the whole year though, I mean, because technically this is a 2021 thing, it's not really a 2020 thing. Right? This is all about 2021 at this point. But I mean, I'm okay, I would think I'd be okay with going back, you know, three months or six months or something. But I'm open to, like you're very close. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know that it's really worth fixing, but I also don't like the idea that someone comes off February 1st for 11 months and what we get. I don't, that matter to me.
I think to be a little more inclusive, I'd go to perhaps July 1 of 2020. You know, maybe six month thing, so the whole year. Kind of take care of Johnson area. On that, one person.
I like Pete's idea.
Question? Any questions? If you're ready to talk. Which would you back and change it as a full-time employee from July 1, 2020?
Yeah, I would think it would be, in addition to the stipulations that you've already read into the record, we would add a stipulation that the employee must have been employed, yeah, as of July 1 of 2020.
So employed, does that include part-time, like if they're part-time and then like a full-time later?
I think this is designed for full-time employees. Yeah. I know it's, you're never going to get this exactly right. I know that, but yeah, we're not going to get it exactly right. And if that's not, who will? I like the July 1. I mean, I'm fine with that. I think that's six months best, you know, and they will have to be here as of February 25th and they'll have to be here on the date that payroll hits on 9/9. I don't think anybody who leaves should get it.
Right. Yeah.
Do you want to reset that once you're reading through? Reset?
If we're going to July 1st, do we really need the February 25th?
I don't think so.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, that Joe. Stipends at $282,000. Must be a full-time employee as a July 1st, 2020 and will be paid on September 9th, 2021.
Guys, okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Next one is 11573013500135. Council of preparations reduced to zero. Employing group health insurance add 527,251. Bond payment 2020 increased to $1,100,000. Based on the motions at the second reading for these budgets, here are some cleanup requests that are positions that were not increased to the interim midpoint, but the increase was less than 750. This makes their 2021 salary equal to 2020 salary plus 750. Deputy order increased to $39,805. Computer administrator increased to $56,477.
447?
I'm sorry, 447. Cook increased to $32,546. Cook increased to $32,546. Cook increased to $32,546. Prosecuary attorney, 10011155000108. Victim advocate increased to $46,563. His active office assistant increased to $39,615. Constabian increased to $33,182. 1128, sorry. Unified probation, 100111431000138. Field officer, 1 reduced to $42,000.
Any other questions here? Discussion on this? Would move to approve all the budgets as presented for final adoption with the changes that were revised as John alluded to for final adoption.
Second. Can you read those numbers again? No motion by Mr. McCarty, second by Mr. Tyson, any other discussion? During that hall of papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close, passes.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual salary.
No motion by Mr. Tyson, second by Jonathan T. Myers, any other discussion? During that hall of papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close, passes. That's next is approval of ordinance 2020 dash 04, first reading. Ordis rating, reporters request to use monies from orders, records, preparation funds, pay records. Reporters, operation expense, reporters, office supplies, perf and social security in 2021.
This is Pete Rowe, Johnson County Recorder.
So as a first, as a first reading, is there any requirements from?
There's no public hearing or anything, but
I've motioned to approve ordinance 2020 dash 04 upon first reading.
Motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Jonathan T. Myers, any other discussion? During that hall of papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close. That's next, routing matters, specific agenda. Is there anything in my seat that we would like to plow up and discuss further?
I'll make a motion to approve the specific agendas.
No motion by Mr. Tyson, second by Mr. McCarty, any other discussion? During that hall of papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Operator, instance service.
This is Sarah, I'm on Zoom, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see if I can get the video. It's sorry, terrible lighting. But on there, it says additional appropriation, which I guess technically it is. It's money that came from the state of Indiana matching for intern dollars that went into a county account. And then we just want to get it transferred to our part-time account since that's how we pay those people. Does that make sense?
Yes. You kind of alluded to this during the budget hearings, right? That as we were looking at 2021, you put in the full amount of the intern, but we could receive back some of the wages if certain criteria was met.
Yeah.
Different topic, but the same program, correct?
Exactly, yeah, it's the Earn Indiana program. So if we have interns that are eligible for that, which is what happened in this year, we are getting some matching money that's back and it just needs to be moved if you guys are wanting to do so from the current account it's in to our part-time.
My motion to approve E1 as presented.
No motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Mr. Turner, any other discussion? During that hall of papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Up next, planning zoning.
David Hill, Johnson County Department of Planning and Zoning. Two items in front of you tonight. First, item A is a request to move money from several of our line items into our planning engineer line item. We had our engineer retire this past July and with that he took a pretty substantial vacation payout. So we need to fill that gap because we were able to fill that position immediately. So we have some excess and some unused money from those other positions to the north, sorry, above the planning engineer spot in your agenda and would like to move that to the engineer slot.
I'll move to approve. Second. No motion by Mr. Ketchum, a second by Jonathan T. Myers, any other discussion? During that hall of papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close, passes.
Thank you. For item B, it has to do with our unsafe building remedies line item. We adopted our unsafe building ordinance in 2015 and since then it's been very helpful and we it's been very helpful in giving us leverage to require people to tear down usually unsafe structures. Occasionally, somebody doesn't do it because they can't, they're disposed, they refuse, what have you. It's rare, but it does happen. We have one case right now, fifty-six, thirty-seven Walnut, where the owner is incognito and the house is fire damaged, open to the elements, open to kids who are attracted to it, and we would like to take that down. A rationale when we built this fund was that we would hopefully be able to populate it, as far as money goes, with fines from our zoning ordinance. The state code does not allow that. The state code requires fines retrieved from the zoning ordinance violations to go to the general fund. And so we're here essentially to ask if you would move, in this case, twenty thousand dollars from the general fund into this unsafe building remedies slot to allow us to take down this house. We think we'll use less than that. We got three bids back. One of them is just under ten thousand dollars, probably the one we'll go with, so it'll be about that cost, but just in case there's some over, we'd like a little bit of overpay there.
David, on this specific property that you're alluding to here, have you ever been in contact with the owner or anyone ever since the fire?
He's been in contact off and on. He spent a decent amount of time in community corrections, and his whereabouts right now are unknown.
So can you tell me a little bit about the process of what would happen if you make the decision? Who would make the decision? What notifications required?
Yeah, the unsafe building ordinance is very prescriptive in that it's actually been going on for a while, and the order has already been made and approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the hearing authority for the unsafe building ordinance. On various occasions, the owner has requested to come back and ask for additional time for one reason or another, and that's usually been granted. So the order was initiated months ago. At this point, the Board of Zoning Appeals is no longer interested in waiting for him. There's a steady group of neighbors who are very concerned about this. They're a case in the neighborhood who obviously are attracted to it. So, yeah, we've gone beyond meeting the requirements of the state ordinance for unsafe building certification.
So does the county in perfect, I mean, interested in the property to get recoumented if the land should sell later?
Yes.
Yeah.
Chair, I would make the motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Carter, second by Mr. Ison. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close. Passes.
I do have an update for you.
I was hoping that you...
Calling, please.
I do have an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, supplemental application.
Angela Morris, Chief of Raisins.
I'm making the motion to approve E-three as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Ison, second by Mr. Turner. Any other discussion? During that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Our election board.
Today evening, training on one park. I have a couple of requests for you. The first one is for overtime for one thousand dollars. That's for our full-time voter staff, working a lot of hours. We may not need it, but I wanted to get it in there because it's only short. And then the second one is for our absent voter board, which are all of our coworkers that are working at the courthouse, and then our satellite centers that we currently have open. We're spending about fourteen thousand, five hundred to fifteen thousand every two weeks in payroll just for those workers. We have voted over twenty-eight thousand walk-in voters, and we've mailed out fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty pay credits. Lot of work going on.
Everything's still in school, that's what I heard.
Yes.
Motion to approve item E-four as presented. Second. I have a motion by Jonathan T. Myers, the second by Mr. Turner. Any other discussion? During that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Passes.
And then my other request is for thirty thousand dollars, and that's out of our voting system reimbursement fund, which is not out of the general fund. And that's just to take care of any other election services that we may have before the election is done.
Motion to approve item E-five as presented. Second. I have a motion by Jonathan T. Myers, the second by Mr. Ison. Any other discussion? During that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you very much.
Get a fun asleep.
Eight days.
Eight days. Stop, Brandon.
I got an email from Amy, and I know that they were, Joe is not going to be here, and there was some other people that could be here, so I don't think they have representation, but let's see. So we had grant, forfeiture, seizure, and then child support. I would make the motion to approve the prosecutor's items, which are six, seven, eight. Ask for another.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Carter, the second by Jonathan T. Myers. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Superior Court, two.
I got a bad phone. It's not working right, and then it just gets clumsy and that's... Judge.
Good evening. I'm Judge Newt, Superior Court, two. Today, request some additional funds for jury as well as some attorney fees. I have three, I'm in the middle of one, started a jury today, which is our first big post-COVID trial, which is interesting to say the least. Got a jury at the end of the day, but it took all day. We had to do it in three separate groups, twenty people each, spreading out the courtroom, and I think the trials are going to take a little longer, you know, because logistics tomorrow, for example, we've got a Zoom mental witness, and it just, our court administrator does a fantastic job of getting that coordinated, because as you can see, I'm a flip phone guy, so to figure out Zoom, she's done a great job, and the staff's doing fantastic. We've just got three big juries by the end of the year. And by big, I mean twelve member, plus instead of two alternates, I go with four alternates because you never know what's going to come up COVID-wise, and we're going to have some attorney fees on top. But I think that our attorney fees are about, we're almost out of money because I've had to pay some conflict attorneys, so that's what's going on. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's quiet in here tonight.
Did you just break mine?
It's almost scary in this quiet. Always makes me nervous. I've heard your face mask. That's all it took. We had face masks a long time ago, sir.
So is it possible that these expenses or appropriations could come from the supplemental public defenders fund or something other than the general fund?
We have some in my supplemental public defender fund that I could use. Sure, I'm willing to come up with some of that. I'm not, I don't sit on that. I mean, I'm willing to contribute as much of that number as I can. I don't have that balance. My court's different than, the court's reason is a lot bigger than my number. I'm steerage compared to court.
So it was a sheriff account, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't...
Isn't it the twenty-five oh one or something like that?
I think you were looking at the user fee jury fee expense on the other day.
Okay. Twenty-five oh one, oh two, whatever it takes. Twenty-five oh one account is pretty healthy, you know, whatever you're, you can handle possibly requests to the jury expense, the professional services. I think, I know you and I've had conversations, that if there's a need, you come and you're asking, you expect our support, you know, and that vice versa, if we give the jury some stuff out of the general fund, away from the general fund and elsewhere, then we can just have that relationship.
That's fair.
Would, any need to do the account number?
Are you asking for like the cash balance?
Well, I don't know. I mean, well, the council, I look at...
I'm gonna... The bullpen here. I like it better when it's quiet.
Looks like the supplemental public defender fund, twelve hundred. Your report to cash balance as of August thirty-first was fifty-three thousand, one hundred.
Sure, that's fine.
Let me make it bigger.
Yeah, that'd be the number. Okay.
What's the number rate?
Fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. You have eight thousand appropriated to spend. For the rest of this year. And then the user fee jury fee, he's got eight thousand professional, thirty thousand jury expense. I don't have that fund balance. It's two five oh one. So first of October, it was around two hundred and thirteen thousand. And that's a pool fund.
I know what we've got, we've still got two payments to go out of that, just that professional services, because the two we've got to go for our standard public defender, I think we've utilized, it's not in that count.
In the general fund, yes.
Yes.
We're out of general.
Thank you.
My fervor would be to appropriate outside of the general fund, but if that's not the will of the council, and I don't have account numbers, and timing is another thing here, would that need to be resubmitted any, or can we transfer within?
You do have appropriations in the twelve hundred and twenty-five oh one. It doesn't look like as of June thirty, they were spent. You can reevaluate, maybe December, because it's too late for November.
Right here, you've seen something different that...
I don't have the user fee fund here.
Okay.
If we have an appropriation and there's a cash balance, then we've got...
Not that I don't like seeing y'all.
Yeah. We don't want to push you to buying. Obviously, if there's something you need to...
Can we go ahead and group of asking to pay out that other person up there?
Use your other fund again.
That's fair.
The other one.
Thank you, Randy, and you looking into that, and Judge Ford, thank you for understanding. With that, I'll motion to approve items E-nine A and E-nine B as presented, with the understanding that if it can come elsewhere, it will.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Henderson, the second by Mr. Ketchum. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
It's a nice parade last weekend on the way. We do it, we do it pretty right up there.
Yeah, they sure did. Nice. Thank you. I'll be safe.
Hi, that's Squared, Director, Health Department. I'm here to ask to move some leftover payroll that I have for my sixth environmental, environmental health specialist into overtime.
Is the overtime, will it be reimbursed, reimbursable?
We will try as much as we can, yes.
That's serious.
Yes. For as long as that is there, we'll ask for it, sure.
How are things doing?
Busy, busy. Had our busiest day today, so, yeah. And we might have some other testing options coming down the pike, but that will only make us busier, so...
Are there rapid tests available in this area? Sorry, is that...
Maybe. Yes, there are some available in the area. We were given some rapid tests. The problem with that is the paperwork and the reporting that goes along with it, so a lot of the local health departments are weighing the option as to whether or not we will be offering that. It wasn't part of the grant agreement when we signed it with the state, and they just showed up on our doorstep with all kinds of parameters. You have to be symptomatic, you have to, and so that's what we're trying to figure out right now.
Another question, with the rise in the numbers, just playing science and your numbers here, but are we testing more people today than we were?
Oh, absolutely, because we're testing with no limitations, so no occupancy, or, you know, residency restrictions, no, you know, you don't have to be symptomatic. Anyone can come and get a test. You can pre-register or not pre-register.
Gotcha. So they can come from another county?
Mm-hmm. They could, they could come from another state.
So is the positivity rate the same?
The positivity percentage is staying about the same. We're just seeing more cases because we're testing. I don't necessarily want to say that's not one hundred percent, and I'm not a scientist, so I can't say that completely, or a doctor, but I would say that, yes, we're seeing those rates stay that way because of, you know, more amount of testing that we're doing.
The positive test of people from outside the county, does that show for Johnson County?
Yeah.
Or does it show where they live?
It shows for the county that the county that they live in or the state that they live in, and the wonderful part about that is that they will contact trace their people in their area. The only difficult thing then is if we need those results, we have to jump through hoes to get, to get those if we would need them.
I'll make the motion to approve E-ten.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Ison, the second by Mr. Henderson. Any other discussion? During that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
My a was in favor.
I'm sorry?
I was a little late on the a.
My next request... Did I interrupt you? I'm so sorry. I apologize. My second one, I'm here, we received two hundred and, roughly two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar IT grant from the State Department of Health. It's a CARES Act, specifically for information technology to improve gaps that we have within the health department as related to COVID, of course. So what I'm asking is to appropriate that money into these four line items, office supplies, contractual services, operating equipment, and office equipment. Some of those numbers that are larger, we were granted permission by the state to, and Sheena's working on the contracts right now to enter... and Sheena's working on the contracts right now, to enter into five-year contracts that they will pay for, which is great because we would not have the sustainability in the next five years to keep a couple of these things going. So the state did agree to that. The only thing, if, and when doing the math, it won't come up to the 264 and change, it's about 10,000 low. And that is because initially we had wanted to, we requested from the state to put $10,000 into an IT specialist kind of stipend for after-hours and weekends, but we're not going to be able to do that. So we would like to, we will be coming in front of you again to put that $10,000 towards a grant manager for all of the COVID grants that we have right now.
So as I understand, this is received into the general fund, Amy, is that right? When they receive the grant or it needs to be appropriated again or how does that work?
Not this particular grant. This one, they'll pay from the grant if it's reimbursed, like any other regular grant. There's another grant that.
Right. Yeah, the regular CARES Act money, we get the payroll reimbursement, that goes into the general fund.
No, this is just a specific CARES IT grant for a local health department.
You're right. You're right. Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ketchum, the second by Mr. Turner, any other discussion? Hearing that all, the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, are you on next?
Sure. Question, 5,000 in overtime.
Payroll relation?
And other things. People should cover for each other in the office.
Could this be related to COVID?
It could be.
Do you guys have my, some my backer down?
Um, yes. We're moving forward.
Motion to approve as presented.
I don't. Motion by Mr. Turner, second by Mr. Ketchum, any other discussion? Hearing that all, the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Passes. Six. Oh. Mr. Turner. Other business, Johnson County, mentioned Mr. here at the board.
Hi, Ken Posky with the Johnson County State Department Board.
Are you sure?
Oh. John Wayles, President of the State Department Board.
He was your shadow right now.
So our budget is pretty much the same amount as in, that we projected or budgeted in 2020, but as you know, we didn't come to you for the fourth quarter appropriation because we had a cut in revenue and a corresponding cut in spending. And depending how things go COVID-wise in 2021, we would do the same thing. Our last two months have actually been pretty much on par with last year. And early in the year, we were about 10% ahead of projections. So it was just that March, April, May thing where things kind of slowed down. But even then, we were only down about 20% compared to some other bureaus in the state that were down 50 to 80%. So we're riding this thing out pretty well. We actually kicked off a big campaign, they ran from July and is wrapping up now, to encourage people to experience outdoor things that are safer, orchards, winery, concerts, downtowns and things like that. And our restaurants, stores, and attractions are reporting, they're actually having record years in many cases. I can't speak for every business, but the ones I visited said 2020's really been actually pretty good for them. So we're going to try to hit it hard again next year, keep that momentum going.
Did the board approve this budget in unanimously or was originally?
Yeah.
Are some of your grants available or do you have a program for, I'm thinking of businesses or establishments that were installed or directly impacted by COVID or your, or restaurants, dining, those kind of places? Or is it, does it have to be promotional measure versus a lifeline?
So our attorney has advised us that we can only give grants to government entities and nonprofits, however we can support those businesses with advertising and support like that. So we've done promotions where if they reach out and give us a small gift card, we'll triple or quadruple that in advertising directly for that business. So, you know, we reach out to them all the time and we encourage, hey, if you have a time that's no for us and slow for you, let us help you during that time.
Do you collect from Airbnb or do you collect from Airbnb?
Yeah, starting, I believe it was August of last year, Indiana law allowed that Airbnb and those entities would collect and remit that directly to the state and then the state would give that to us. So Airbnb is now on a whole plenty of our hotels.
So do you, is them on your side for Airbnb? Are they able to?
Yes, we do. Once, we don't know all of them because if you go to Airbnb, it doesn't list who the owner is, but the ones that have reached out to us, like the corner, corner of Main or corner of Broadway in Greenwood and their other property, those are two examples of ones that have reached out to us and we certainly list them since they're named as well.
You have an idea of, you know, your more traditional hotel, motel rooms, the number in, of inventory in Johnson County that's maybe today or started this year versus the number projected? Are there, are there new, new units in or construction that you're aware of or expansion?
There was going to be some expansion in Greenwood, but obviously COVID is, I think, for those plans in hold. Fortunately, we got the two new hotels in Franklin that started construction. And in one case, wrapped it up before COVID and the other one completed in June, that was the Hampton and Fairfield. So those two properties have really helped. One of them, actually I had lunch with both of them. We were at a chamber meeting and I was sitting at the table with both of those folks. And they said that they both exceeded expectations. One was full for an entire month. The military looked them for an entire month, 100% occupancy. So they said that was a nice way to open, that was the Hampton. So they're open and they're full, doing really well.
There was some talk about putting something up in Greenwood. Are you still making that or?
Yeah. Mayor Myers continues to work on that. There's been different proposals, long-term state hotel, regular hotel, hotels, conference center. As in my last conversation, nothing at this time is moving forward, but they hope that it will maybe.
This is not the proper place, I know, but I have to say, I've seen some neat kiosks. You know, some like structures that are kind of temporary and can move. It could move to the venues around the county. Do you do that?
So one of the other things in our long-term plan is actually to have larger racks where we can display our materials as well as that from our partners. And in some cases, kiosks could potentially be in certain locations. Now, you may know that we share our visitor center here in Franklin with Aspire. And so we're working with Aspire since we're in Franklin and their main office is in Greenwood to have a presence or a kiosk in their location. So they just, they just opened, but we have a large rack with space for brochures and we're talking about moving that from Franklin up to Greenwood as the first start, but yeah, certainly in our regard.
If I could just make a comment. John Wayles, President of the Tourism Board this year. You probably have seen in the news, it's been all over the place, how tourism has just been decimated because of COVID this year. And counties all over the state are really struggling and we're not. And there are several reasons for that, but the main reason is standing right here. So Ken has been a tremendous asset to our community and the board, we recognized that in our last meeting. Him and also Shelby, who's one of our employees. We have been able to take a lot of the stuff that we were outsourcing and effectively do that in-house now, saving us a ton of money. And then we also saved a lot of money because we made change in our legal and that has helped us out as well. So with those two things and with Ken's leadership, that is why Johnson County is really doing well in the tourism part of it, where other counties simply are not.
I'm going to. Go ahead. I'm making a motion to approve item F1, visitor tourism, 2021 budget. Second. Motion by Mr. Eisen, the second by Mr. Henderson, any other discussion? Hearing that all, the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
John, is that Texaco gas station a tourist destination down there?
It should be.
It should be, shouldn't it?
Come on by the time.
It's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Already old business, sheriff, rural sheriff, salary contract, 2021.
Good evening, Roy Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff. Contract for 2021 has been presented to go to commissioners next month for their approval. We get approval from the council. I know that the funds were listed in our normal budget during the process.
Need or review?
I do have some discussion on this matter.
I figured you would.
I think you're doing a fine job, Sheriff.
Like Chief, I mean, Council.
You must have turned on him.
Three ring binder. I noticed it's not signed by Kevin Walz here. Name not signed on it, so. Oh, okay. They managed extremely, extremely well with the jail project.
It's under further review.
It's good to have friends.
I'll motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Henderson, the second by Mr. Eisen, any other discussion? Hearing that all, the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you, Sheriff. Nothing else, I'll go. Motion to approve. So. Second. Motion by Mr. Eisen, the second by Mr. Henderson, call the favor.
Aye.